Good afternoon. Welcome to today's policy meeting of the Phoenix City Council. We will call this meeting to order and we will go straight to our first agenda item, which is on solid waste services. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman DeCecio. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilwoman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Stark. Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. Will you please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The title of the following ordinance number on the agenda was available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance number G6673.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager Karen Peters will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Good afternoon. I am Deputy City Manager Karen Peters and with me this afternoon, from Public Works, our Director Ginger Spencer, our Assistant Director Joe Jades, Chief Financial Officer Denise Olson, and our Budget and Research Director Jeff Barton. We're very pleased to be here today to follow up on our recent efforts. So, in today's presentation, we will present a brief recap about the trash and recycling services that Phoenix Public Works provides in our community and the people, assets, and operations behind those programs and services. We will talk about the current monthly rate that we are charging our residential customers and how that rate has remained unchanged for 11 years, as well as explain the current challenges we are experiencing that are affecting our operations. We will discuss the proposed rate options yet again. These options were developed over many months, working closely with the Budget and Research and Finance Departments, a Citizen Rate Advisory Board, and independent analysis of the cost of our services, as well as our staff. When we met in November, you asked us to gather feedback from the community, and that we did. We worked hard to reach as many Phoenix residents as possible, and so we'll briefly describe our outreach strategy and methods. Then, we'll present to you the results of those outreach efforts, including a survey that reached residents in every council district and provided feedback about how they feel about our solid waste services, as well as the rate options that had been presented to the city council. Based upon that input, staff will present the recommendation described in the council report to increase, for the first time in 11 years, residential solid waste service rates and the solid waste disposal site fee applicable to customers disposing solid waste at city facilities. With that, I will turn the presentation over to Ginger Spencer and the rest of our team.
Thank you, Karen. Mayor and city council, thank you for this opportunity. The Public Works Department is responsible for providing solid waste services to more than 400,000 Phoenix households, where our Enterprise Department and the monthly solid waste rate goes to cover all of the services we provide to our customers. We provide weekly trash and recycling. We collect bulk trash, those are the big and bulky items that are too big for the normal garbage containers, four times a year. We process the recyclables that we collect from our residents. And we process our trash at our transfer stations and haul them to our landfill sixties out of the week. And we host nine household hazardous waste events each year for batteries, oil, paint, other products, or chemicals and electronic waste. And our residents get one free dump at our transfer stations once a month. And we do all of those services for the monthly rate of $26.80, which, as Karen said, has remained unchanged for the past 11 years. So how do we provide the services that we do? We have 600 employees, the men and women who make up our solid waste divisions. We have drivers, specialists, laborers, engineers, and the mechanics who maintain their trucks, just to name a few, who do their best to ensure the sanitary and efficient collection of solid waste. We have 433 trucks that we rely on to deliver our services. We have two transfer stations where we process our garbage and two recycling plants that we process our recyclables. One of the plants is located up north, that's known as our North Gateway Transfer Station in Murph, that's off of I-17 in Dixileta. And then we have the other one that's located in the south, which is known as our 27th Avenue Murph, located off of 27th Avenue and Lower Buckeye. We have one active landfill, and it's located in the city of Buckeye, 60 miles outside of downtown Phoenix. That's one way. And we have five closed landfills that we're responsible for maintaining, monitoring, and managing in perpetuity. So I'd like to review the history of our solid waste residential rate. We reviewed this when we came before you on November 12th, but I'd like to go over again very briefly. So as you can see, since 1990, there has always been a gradual increase in our monthly solid waste residential rate. Up until 2009, that was 11 years ago, when it plateaued. There was only one other time when the rate remained unchanged, and that was from 1993 to 1997, when the rate went from $12.50 to $15 in 1998. So from 1993 to 1998, over that four-year span, it was an increase of $2.50 at that time, which was an increase of a 20% at that time, 20% increase. Also, during that same time, our population grew from 987,000 residents to over 1.6 million residents. I'd like you to know of our customer base, it actually grew by 30,000 accounts during that same timeframe. So how did we get by the last 11 years, all that time? We did savings and efficiencies. During the first seven years of that, of the 10-year span, we had employee concessions by management, middle managers, executives, and all of our rank-and-file employees. We deferred equipment, vehicles, as well as new purchases. We didn't add vehicles for growth. We were able to get savings by refinancing our bonds. And the recycling revenue, which I'll talk about in just a moment, helped supplement our residential fee. And we did a drawdown on our fund balance. So where do we stand today? There has been a significant decline in our recycling revenue, and I'm going to get to that, we've got a slide in just a moment. But this is why we have a shortfall, is because of the decline in the recycling revenue. We have had increased equipment and maintenance costs. The last three years, the employee concessions were restored. And right now, we have a low fund balance. And so it's getting to the point where it has dropped below what the recommended amount is by our CFO. And so we're trying to be mindful of that as well. Okay, so the recycling market. We reviewed this during our first presentation on November 12th. But every, I believe a lot of people have heard what's going on in China. So in the past, we would send 80% of our recyclables to China. And then China came out with the China Sword in about 2018, where basically they said that they were no longer going to accept certain types of recyclables, as well as they require a .5% contamination rate. That's basically a 0% contamination rate. This had worldwide impact. And so for us, what that meant was, in our heyday, our recycling revenue, you can see one year, we brought in almost 12 million in revenue. Over the 10-year timeframe, we actually averaged about 9 million in revenue. When this announcement came, our revenue dropped from 9 million to 6 million. This year, we're projected to be at 3.3 million. And then, as you can see, the dotted line, we have actually forecasted it at zero, because we don't know if we've hit bottom, and we want to be fiscally conservative. When we came before you in November, we also talked about other planned revenue options. We didn't want this rate increase to be solely on the backs of our residents. What we know is 88% of our revenue that we bring in is from the solid waste residential fee, but we also bring in revenue from the fees that we charge when customers bring their waste directly to our transfer stations or landfill. So one of the things we had talked about was raising the tipping fee. Our current disposal tipping fee at our transfer station and landfills is $38.25. That rate has remained the same the last 11 years. And so we have a recommendation where we're looking to increase the rate as well, and that came from the recommendation from our consultant with New Gen Strategies, Mr. Dave Yonkey. So we are recommending an increase there as well. In addition, we had talked about raising revenue by charging a commercial permit fee for private haulers who conduct business within the city limits. We have hosted two meetings with the private haulers, and that was thanks to the National Waste and Recycling Association, the Arizona Chapter of NWRA, who helped us convene the groups. And so what we learned from meeting with the private haulers is we still have some work to do on how we're going to actually implement that fee, so that we have equity amongst the private haulers. And so at this time, we're not coming forward with that recommendation today. That's something that we would like to continue to work with the private haulers on in NWA and continue, in, excuse me, NWRA, and work on that and bring that forward at the appropriate time. Sorry, my South Phoenix roots there. Okay. Next, I want to review the solid waste rate options that we presented on November 12th. At the time, we presented four options, but as well as one to talk about what would happen if we did not increase our monthly residential fee. So one of the options was no increase. If we were to move forward with a no increase option, we would have to eliminate bulk trash, we would have to eliminate our HH, Household Hazardous Waste Events, we would have to eliminate our composting programs and shutter that facility, we would have to shutter our Murph that's located off of 27th Avenue and Lower Buckeye. We would also have to go to every other week recycling. We would remove our eco-stations that we provide in parks that are for multifamily units. And then we would also have the potential elimination of approximately 135 positions. So that's one end. The other end was, what would it take to maintain our current level of services? And that would require a rate increase of $6.40 a month. Another option we looked at was eliminating composting. What we know is 30% of what's currently being thrown away in the garbage container is yard waste, and so that's why we have a composting program. But that program is in its second year of development, and so we're still developing that market. So right now, we're working to build the revenues that they offset the expenses. But right now, because they do not cover the expenses, we looked at that as an option. If we were to do that, to send our yard waste to the landfill, that would require a rate increase of $5.65. We also looked at an option that would allow us to continue to provide all the services we do, but reduce our operational costs. This is similar to what the city of Tucson has done, with going to every other week recycling. That would require a rate increase of $5.50. And then the last option we presented was eliminating recycling and composting. We have a diversion goal, Reimagine Phoenix, where it's to achieve a 40% diversion by December 31st of this year. We have currently achieved a 36% diversion, exceeding the national average of 34%. In this case, if we were to landfill all of our material, it would require a rate increase of $4.75. We also looked at an inflation factor, going back to the history of our solid waste rates. You could see that most times, we were keeping up with inflation when the rate did increase. So we are proposing a 2% inflation factor beginning January 21. We looked at inflation over a 30-year period, over a 10-year period. We looked at the general inflation index, as well as the index for solid waste for recycling and garbage. It ranged from 1.8% to three, over 3%, about 3.4%. And so working with our CFO Denise Olson, we thought that a 2% inflation was a reasonable amount and would help us cover our cost. So Mayor and City Council, you directed us to take these options out into the community, and that's what we did. And I'm happy to report what we learned. What we learned is that our Phoenix residents, they value the services that we provide. They want to maintain the current service level that we provide. They're willing to pay for these services. And they value sustainability. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Joe Jades, our Assistant Public Works Director, to go over our community outreach efforts and the survey results. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So our strategy to reach out to the community and get a pulse for how they feel about our services and to really get their preferences on the rate options that we had available to present to them, involved a number of in-person outreach opportunities, an online outreach effort, substantial online outreach effort. We had created a dedicated webpage with all the information that we could possibly think to make available to the public, so they could have access to all the information about the rate options. And we also prepared a survey instrument, so that we could make sure we could capture feedback from our residents about their preferences and about how they feel about our services. For outreach activities in person, the Public Works Department hosted 13 community meetings throughout the city, trying to cover all the council districts as well. We also attended a number of neighborhood association meetings, block watch meetings, et cetera. We engaged with some transfer station, residents at our transfer stations, as well as an HHW event in January. We did some knock and talks, and we tabled a series of city events that were hosted. And we did this all essentially in the months of December and January, with 51 total community engagements. So we were able to reach 1,000 residents through that process of face-to-face interactions. To complement our face-to-face interactions, we also wanted to make sure we were doing everything we could online. So we did a series of social media posts. We also published in the city services bill in December and in January, so that all of our customers could be aware and participate, as well as community newsletters, council newsletters, and through media, traditional media. In terms of our website, we were able to get pretty good action at our website in just two short months, with over 11,000 unique page views, essentially meaning unique devices accessing the website. And as you can see, over 50% of those were people's mobile devices. That's the way we're headed. We also had a great response rate on the surveys, with over 5,800 survey responses received. And so now I'd like to share with you those responses. One of the questions we asked was, which services are most valued by our residents? And so they told us weekly trash collection, followed closely by recycling collection, and then our bulk trash collection program. We also wanted to know from our residents how they felt about the quality of our services. And so nine in 10 Phoenix residents said they were satisfied. And of real importance to us, 75% said that they were highly satisfied. And for our employees, when I shared this news with them, they were thrilled, because we do focus very much on providing excellent customer service, that's a core tenet of ours. And so they were very proud to know that the residents are saying that we're providing good service. Nine in 10 of our residents also responded that recycling and waste diversion are important to them. And again, 75% of those said it's very important to them. And this is consistent with what we heard in our personal engagements with the business community and with our residents, where they indicated that sustainability is something they expect that we're providing, in terms of how we handle their waste. And in terms of survey responses or comments that we received, the majority of those were to maintain our services, increase recycle education, and enhance our sustainability and waste diversion services. In terms of the rate option preferences, 58% of our survey respondents indicated a preference for rate option one, which was to maintain all services. 22% indicated that they wanted to maintain all services, but they were willing to have their recycle collection on an every-other-week basis. 8% indicated a preference for no rate increase and to have those service reductions that Ginger explained earlier. 8% also indicated a preference to eliminate the composting program for a little savings on the rate. And 3% indicated a preference to eliminate both composting and recycling and send everything to the landfill. One of the other things you asked at our November council meeting was for us to get feedback about how residents feel about spreading the rate increase over two years. So 62% of the respondents indicated a preference for the rate increase to be over two years, rather than all in the first year. I'm going to turn it back to Ginger.
Thank you, Joe. So, based on the survey results, staff recommends that we move forward with option one, which is maintaining the current level of service and do it in a phased-in approach over a two-year period with a 2% inflation factor annually. Also, in regards to the disposal tipping fee, staff would recommend increasing the solid waste rate for solid waste disposal facility customers from the $38.25 to increasing it to, by $3.75 in year one, $2 in year three, and $1 in year five. And that was based off the recommendation, again, from our consultant. I would like to thank all of the city staff who worked on this. We had individuals from the manager's office, from Public Works Department, from Budget and Research, from the Finance Department, from the Communications Department, even the council offices, mayor and council offices, working on this effort. So I want to thank everyone for their time, all the residents who came out to our meetings, who took the surveys, all of our partners and stakeholders. I just want to thank everyone for their time that they put into this effort. And with that, Mayor and Council, we will take any questions that you may have, and thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all the time you put in. 51 meetings is impressive. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance G6673, which adopts rate option one, phased over two years, as described in the council report.
Second. We have a motion and a second?
I have a question.
Councilwoman Williams.
Will you continue to look for savings, especially a smaller container, as one of those for people who don't need a full container? And other, I know we've talked about some other options. Will you continue to look for those and perhaps could bring them back later in the year?
Mayor and Councilwoman Williams, the answer is yes. We had a lot of great ideas that came forward from these meetings, from council, from our employees. And so we're going to, we're going to always look for continuous ways for efficiencies and to save money. And it's time for us to do a comprehensive solid waste management plan that includes those efficiencies, and then we do look forward to bringing those back to council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so first of all, I just want to thank everyone that, sorry, on this issue, I know that it wasn't easy, I know that when I first got briefed on this, I was like, oh my God, we're doing another increase. And it wasn't easy. But I, but today, I just have to say that I'm proud to say that the residents and constituents of District 5 submitted about 1,200 total surveys voicing their opinions about the solid waste services rate increase. That participation represents over 20% of the overall citywide submissions. To represent District with an eighth of the city's population, but over a fifth of all the responses to this survey, I believe this shows how important the issue is to my constituents. It also shows how seriously we take this vote. I would like to thank Emanuel Gallardo Sanidad from my office for really going above and beyond on this item. Emanuel worked with our community and student interns, as well as our friends from Public Works to go door-to-door and speak to people about the importance of filling out the online survey. Thanks for their efforts, we were able to get an additional 295 surveys filled out from District 5 in the last few days of the survey. In the end, the survey results speak for themselves. The majority of District 5 residents surveyed support option one, maintaining the current services levels. They also broadly support the phased-in implementation of the new service fees. And I also want to thank everyone, all the workers that are here today in support of this. I don't think that we would have been able to get to the option that we got to today without all the great work that you guys do day in and day out. Having 75% of our constituents say the amazing work that you guys do, I think is very telling and shows how we're able, going to be able to, how we're going to be able to make this happen. So we, so we have listened to our constituents, our office has listened to everyone that has come and talked to us about this issue, and we are now ready to support the policy that our constituents supported. So thank you so much, everyone, for all the great work.
Thank you, and congratulations to your office for helping make that strong turnout happen. Shall we go to cards? We'll begin with Mike Huckins from the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce. He'll be followed by Jason Stokes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Mike Huckins with the Greater Phoenix Chamber, here today in support of the city of Phoenix maintaining their current level of solid waste and recycling services. I'd like to first thank staff for coming over to the chamber, especially Joe and, Joe and Ginger, last week, not once, but twice, to present on the proposals and answering at times some very tough questions from our, from our membership. I think it's clear from the service, the survey results and the community outreach meetings, that residents in Phoenix are supportive of recycling in the city, and the business community joins them in being supportive of Phoenix keeping its recycling service, especially us being the fifth-largest city in the nation. I think I mentioned before that the chambers not take supporting rate increases lightly, that should go without saying, but the chamber felt like this was reasonable, our members were supportive, and so we ask for your support. Without Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you for your diligent process as well. Thank you for your support. Jason will be followed by Colin Tetra.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Jason Stokes, I'm a native of Phoenix, resident of District 2, also president of ASPA TIA, we're the Professional Employees Association here, representing over 3,000 employees, most of which are residents here. First off, I'd like to thank the city for maintaining the rates for the last 11 years through the global financial crisis while me and my colleagues were in concessions. And I strongly ask the council to pass option number one. I would hate to think that our employees that shouldered a lot of this burden potentially would become unemployed with these different changes. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Colin will be followed by Kimber Lanning.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Colin Tetra, I have the honor of serving as your chairperson for the city's Environmental Quality and Sustainability Commission. It should be noted that the commission is comprised of thought leaders, executives, nonprofit leaders, and other luminaries from around the community. On 2000, excuse me, on November 14th, 2019, the EQSC voted to support a full continuation of city services in the solid waste area. In particular, the commission believes that amending the present service offerings to remove recycling or composting would, of the following, irrevocably impede the ability to meet its previous zero-waste goals by 2050, accelerate long-term financial costs that constitute ineffective long-term planning, number three, impair the city's ability to engage the capital and debt markets for favorable financial ratings associated with cities acting in a sustainable manner, number four, significantly impede the region in its desire to create a circular economy, number five, create significant reputational and operational risk to the city that would negatively impact future out-of-market economic development engagement and opportunities, and number six, actively and purposely move the city away from its previously adopted sustainability goals. On a personal note, I appreciate your thoughtful and your considerate deliberation of this. It's important to note that sustainability is more than just environmental concerns. It's about creating a future that we can all be... It's about creating a future that we can all be proud of. To choose not to invest in our solid waste services and infrastructure would be an abdication of our shared responsibility to create a 21st-century Phoenix. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kimber will be followed by Jose Esparza.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the time and effort you've put into deliberating this important topic. As a representative of small business and a small business owner myself, it's easy for me to say I'm not a fan of fees. I'm never a fan of fees. I don't think they're great, they're not to be taken lightly, especially in a time when so many people in our community are struggling. That being said, I think sending a message that Phoenix is not a leader in mitigating climate change and policies that will lead us to be a sustainable city is a mistake, and frankly, it's bad for business. So, I'm here today to represent small local businesses across Phoenix who support staff in their recommendation to maintain current service levels, and I would also like to acknowledge the very diligent work that staff has done in looking at the wide variety of options that are ahead of us. I think their recommendations are exactly what the community needs. I do want to acknowledge, though, that this council needs to consistently be focused on affordability. This community is becoming rapidly unaffordable. This issue aside, we need to make sure that we keep affordable housing and other cost-reduction opportunities on the table to make sure that families can stay in their homes and be comfortable. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Jose will be followed by Dan Russell.
Mayor and Council, thank you very much. I'd like to thank the city manager's office for allowing me to participate in the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Over the last couple of years, we attended several meetings, we did a thorough analysis of the rates, and I'm confident that it is time to raise the rates. It's never an easy decision to make, especially as policymakers, but as we've heard, city staff has been working on regulatory lag, rates that are 11-years-old, and I think they deserve applause for creating efficiencies and looking for ways to get by on those rates that were approved 11-years ago. So, again, as a member of that committee, I can assure you, we did take a hard look at the rates, and I do approve or I recommend the staff's.
Thank you, and thank you to the whole committee. You've all got a PhD in solid waste ratemaking, and we are grateful for your service over long hours.
Thank you.
Dan will be followed by Carolyn Chapman.
My name is Don Russell. I'm in District One. For those of you who do not know, this is the 150th anniversary of the City of Phoenix. We went from a dusty outpost to the fifth-largest city in the nation. How about that, huh? And to commemorate this celebration, I made these hats, 1870 to 2020, and I'd like you guys, if you could, take them out to some of the drivers that pick up our trash and make Phoenix clean and beautiful. Can you do that for us? Thank you.
They're right there.
My family participates in the green waste program. We pay extra money for that because we want to make a difference. We're happy to pay more money to make a difference. In one area, I'd like to see them make a difference too, not just in solid waste. When I'm driving into town today, I saw in Jefferson, I saw a homeless camp, and I drove in there down 13th Avenue, and I counted over 100 makeshift shelters and tents, and no J-Johns, no place for these guys to use the restroom, but they're using the restroom, right? Right out there in the open, in some of the alleys and stuff like that. I'd like to propose that we raise our rates to $10 a month and help fund a shelter for our homeless people, right? The City of Phoenix has over 50 acres at 19th Avenue, south of Lower Buckeye. Its old landfills closed down in the early 80s. What a great place to pitch a tent. Instead of on the sidewalk, let them go down there and pitch a tent. Let's use some money to help them out. They should live in dignity too. It's a sad situation down there, but my family is happy to help fund that and pay more for a rate increase to help solid waste, as well as the homeless population in the City of Phoenix, help them live in some dignity. We have the resources, we have the property. Somebody beat me? Am I timed up? No? Three seconds? Anyway, thanks for listening. Happy anniversary, Phoenix!
Carolyn will be followed by Kyla Fisher.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Carolyn Chapman, a resident of City Council, District Eight, and a very satisfied customer for solid waste. Thanks to each of you for your servant leadership and conscientious stewardship that makes Phoenix a model city, premier destination, and an overall great place to live, work, and play. I am here to express my support for the recommended solid waste services residential fee increase of $6.40 to be implemented over the next two years. I was here the last time, over a decade ago, that the council considered a fee increase, and at that time, it was decided that it was not an opportune time to do so. I think the time is now. For some, it probably will never be the right time for a fee increase. I am pretty hard-pressed to think of any commodity of service that I receive, value, and want to keep whose costs have not increased over the last decade. Phoenix has a longstanding stellar international reputation for its solid waste service delivery, innovation, efficiency, and customer satisfaction. Not only are solid waste employees keeping our city clean and sanitary, they are also great ambassadors who represent the city well in every neighborhood, every week. As indicated by recent and past customer service surveys, we are very satisfied with our solid waste services. Fortunately or unfortunately, as long as the city is in the business of providing essential public health services like water and sewer, solid waste collection, and disposal rate increases will be necessary if we want to maintain and sustain a high quality of life now and in the future. To me, this is a matter of pay me now or pay me later. As a customer, I would rather pay now and maintain our services. I implore you to take strategic proactive action to approve the recommended rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyla will be followed by Kami Galvani.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council members. I have additional testimony. Who should I give that to? Written testimony? Thank you, sir. I'm coming today to ask you to keep the city's current level of solid waste and recycling service. I come speak to you today as a Phoenix resident of District Three, but I want to briefly explain my background. I'm a sustainability consultant who specializes in sustainable packaging design and policy. My clients are both Fortune 1,000 companies, as well as national trade associations. I believe that we do a massive disservice to recycling when we speak about it only as an environmental imperative. Kind of ironic for a sustainability professional. Recycling materials are manufacturing feedstock. We use waste in new ways to help companies access cheaper material inputs, reduce their environmental footprint, and create jobs. When you view curbside recycling as a necessary tool to enable industrial manufacturing, then you can begin to understand the economic and competitive value in maintaining a high-quality curbside program and what it provides to a city's economic advantage. The disruption of China has unearthed the fact that we've been neglecting our domestic processing capabilities and forgetting that the need to produce quality feedstocks, and as a result, I believe we have an untapped economic growth opportunity. What I want to note is that in many of the national meetings and task forces I participate in, Phoenix is frequently held up as a model of best practices for the circular economy. One initiative this city is leading that is being closely observed across the globe is the recent contract with Renewology, which will be the first large-scale pilot collection, sortation, and processing of plastic waste. The first company, or in this case, city, who can achieve that at scale will create a breakthrough that will resonate not just across this nation, but across the globe. Phoenix is poised to tap this, but not if you cut your curbside program. Risen is another example of the city's leadership frequently cited. The new trend in recycling economics is to situate businesses with waste streams and local industries to create new economic growth and reduce costs. Risen is frequently held up by industry as an example of innovative best practices towards this regard. Mayor, council members, there's a tremendous opportunity coming for cities and organizations that are poised to leverage the reuse of consumer waste. As someone who spends their days deeply embedded in the demands and economics of recyclables, I urge you not to cancel or cut our curbside program.
Thank you.
And as you evaluate next steps, I'd encourage you to spend more time with the innovative team that's part of Public Works and Risen.
Thank you for your testimony. Kami will be followed by Jim Valier.
Thank you. My name is Kami Galvani, and I live, work, and raise my three kids in Phoenix. I am an attorney at Lewis Roka Rothberger Christie, and I am the Chair of their Corporate Social Responsibility Committee. Recently, I've developed a personal interest in sustainability, and so I've conducted a lot of independent research, taken classes at ASU. I helped my former employer achieve platinum status with the Phoenix Green Business Leader Program, and I've attended a lot of conferences. And I can tell you that I have learned that the number-one justification for sustainable practices is economic and not environmental. I believe we will suffer three economic disadvantages if we cut or cancel our curbside recycling program. First of all, sustainability is the future, and all companies are looking at this. If we cut our program, we are not going to be able to attract new businesses. They are not going to invest in facilities if their employees cannot even have a basic recycling program at home. Second, we will have missed revenue from the sale of recycled materials. Two weeks ago, I attended the Waste Management Sustainability Forum in Scottsdale. There were lots of industry leaders there, including Amazon, Dow, and Procter &amp; Gamble, and something that a rep from Procter &amp; Gamble said stuck with me. He said that companies are making serious commitments to invest in putting post-consumer recycled content in all of their products and packaging, and they are worried that cities are now going to cut their programs and the materials are not going to be there. And he said, his exact words were, "Tell your cities to weather the storm. The market will be there. Do not cut these programs because then we will not be able to achieve our goals." And third, we will have a huge lost investment if we cut our program. The city has invested millions of dollars and has a wonderful, creative, and innovative team and infrastructure in their zero-waste program. If we cut this program now, all that we've invested in that program will go to waste. We could be a leader in this industry, and if we cut or cancel our program, that all goes away, and all the money that we've invested will be lost. I urge you to vote for option one.
Thank you. Jim will be followed by Lauren Hill.
Yeah, my name is Jim Valer, and I'll be speaking for myself right now. Thank you for the opportunity, or I'm sorry, thank you for the work you have done on this. It's much appreciated. I personally am in favor of option one, and I have no problem with a slight rate increase. I would also like to add that I am the chairman for the Grand Canyon Chapter of the Sierra Club, and I do feel quite certain that the Sierra Club here in Arizona is in favor of option one also. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren will be followed by Alicia Merce.
Mayor and City Council, thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. My name is Lauren Hill, and I'm here today as a resident of the City of Phoenix, but more importantly, as the mother of an 18-month-old daughter who's going to have to be part of the generation that has to live with the consequences of our actions or inactions within this next decade. And I'm here in favor of option one, to keep the services as they are. Phoenix, as we've talked about and previously, set a goal to divert our waste from landfills by 2020 by 40%, and by 2050 by 100%, and the possibility of eliminating or decreasing these programs will not allow for the continued innovation that will be needed to reach that 2050 goal. From an environmental standpoint, the reasons for recycling go beyond money, although, as it's been illuminated, that's also important. Studies show that recycling helps to reduce energy and decrease greenhouse gases, which is very important in the City of Phoenix, as we're consistently rated as one of the worst cities for air quality. And the infrastructure should be built up to increase the innovation provided by our composting services, as well as this is a huge waste diversion tactic that we're not utilizing to its full capacity yet. Eliminating the composting program such as in options two, four, and five is misguided, as this is one of the best ways that we can help reduce our landfill need and reduce our greenhouse gases. And the recycle pickup to every-other-week as an option three will not encourage residents to use those services as readily potentially, and may result in more being tossed in the landfill container. The reality is that there's no time left for this argument, and in all honesty, the effects of climate change are already happening and in front of our face, and it's no longer a belief. It's something you either understand or you don't, and every decision has to take into account how it's going to affect the environment. And in order, it needs to be a constant priority for all of you as representatives of our community, if you want to keep saying that you're working to build a better city and state for our present-day residents and for our own families and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia will be followed by Bill Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City of Phoenix staff, and the community at large for coming out for such an important conversation this afternoon. I am currently an Arizona State University employee, but I'm here actually as a City of Phoenix resident under District Three. Proud member of the City of Phoenix community and really proud of the work that the city has done over the past decade or so. For some of you that remember, at one point, we were deemed the least sustainable city on earth under the book Bird on Fire. And the work that the city has taken on and done, specifically Public Works in partnering with the Economic Development Department, has really put the city on the stage, not just in terms of the work in circular economy, but seeing city departments partner and drive cross-pollination in understanding how can we collectively solve these problems together. As Kyla said, as Colin has said, has really put the city on an international stage. And for a lot of us, that really makes us proud to be members of this community. I hope today, as you think about this vote, you think about the positive and negative components and implications of this, and not just in terms of what this means for residents in the community today, but also what it means in terms of residents for tomorrow, our children, our grandchildren, and what that will look like. Some people have hinted on terms of the GHG implications. One of my favorite statistics in Public Works presentations, in which I definitely have stolen from, if you will, is that City of Phoenix Public Works Department currently could make 14 trips to the moon and back out to the landfill. Recycling helps to decrease that. As you can imagine, that has a huge GHG implication. So, an example of unintended consequences of making changes to recycling will increase that, and GHG will have negative implications, not just for air quality, but obviously economic development and attraction as people look to move to the Valley. We will actually go full circle back to being the least sustainable city on earth. So, I encourage you to vote in favor of option one. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill will be followed by Mark Bernstein.
My name is Bill Campbell. I also work for Arizona State University, and I'm a Phoenix resident in the Sal de Sisos District. I'm here to ask for your support for the full rate increase to keep all current set of diversion services offered by the city. There's a waste conference that's sponsored every year by SWANA, was held in October in Phoenix this year, and through my work, I'm able to attend this conference annually. And this is the first time that a host city has been so prominently displayed with their innovations and their programs, and they really stand out. And, you know, Phoenix is seen as innovators and leaders in this space, so I ask you, and they recognize that a growing city with a changing waste stream requires that they innovate and adapt their services to provide quality for the residents. Also, as a Phoenix resident and in my work at ASU, I've had the opportunity to work with folks across the supply chain, the solid waste, you know, from the drivers to the operators at the Murfs, to the analyst management, all the way to Ginger and Joe, and you've got a great team. I mean, they're smart, they're innovative, and they care about the city. So, we ask you to please continue to support them and support this request for rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark will be followed by Phil Shotbean.
First, I'd like to thank council and the mayor for letting me chat with you today. I moved to Roosevelt Row six months ago from Los Angeles, and I moved here to take over ASU Sustainability Solutions Service. I've had a great time here in Roosevelt Row. I take the light rail every day to campus and talk about the ability to kind of walk around and do things. I rarely drive my car, so very happy to be here. I've been working in recycling and waste stuff for many years. I helped start Philadelphia's first recycling program very long time ago. I was really young then. And I've studied the issue, both in the economic... And I've studied the issue, both in the economic value, the environmental value, the reputation value. You've heard that all before. I also look out to the future. I'm really good at forecasting and predicting. And what I see is a robust future for recycling opportunities. Think about, you may remember the oil embargoes of the '70s and '80s, bad in general, great in terms of innovation for energy efficiency and renewable energy. It really spurred innovation. And what we're seeing with the China change now is spurring innovation in recycling and recycling opportunities, changing how we think about it, reconstructing, think about reusing and repurposing locally, creating jobs, creating innovation. I'm really bullish on the future of entrepreneurs. I've seen a lot happen here in Phoenix, and I'm really happy to help move these ideas. You have an opportunity to continue to push the envelope and be on the cutting edge when those technologies show up and those entrepreneurs move here to Phoenix to start businesses. So, please vote for this proposal. Thanks.
Thank you. Philip will be followed by our final speaker of the day, Jennifer from Launa. We just got another card, so Jennifer will be followed by Dolores Henderson. Just in the nick of time. Now, we're closing cards.
Okay. I have a few notes, about 72 minutes' worth of notes. Just kidding, really. Sorry, Council. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Council that's on the phone as well. My name is Jennifer Grundal. I work for Launa, the Labor's International Union of North America, and we represent all of the drivers. So, everyone that's in a neighborhood that sees a truck go by, whether they're picking up recycling, which you've heard a lot about today, green organics, if they're picking up garbage, those are the folks we represent. And those are the folks that kids wait, and they run. Some of them are here today, actually, in the audience. And they're like, "Look, the garbage is here." And our drivers get out, and they talk to them, they smile with them, there's YouTube videos about them. I mean, there's so many great, wonderful things that are out there, and they're dedicated. So, over the last 11 years, Phoenix, as you've heard, has added 30,000 new accounts. 30,000 new garbage cans that need to be picked up. But what Phoenix hasn't added is a rate increase. I don't like rate increases either. I don't think anyone does. I can't imagine anyone wants to pay more money in a bill. All of us are like, "You know, it's a little over $6. I could buy anything with that," right? Should I pay more to have my trash picked up? My green organics, my recycling? Yeah, we should do that. I'm in favor of it. I would pay double if that was an option. Clearly, I'm in favor of Option 1, if I have not said that, and I don't think I did. But more because I see the drivers constantly. They're up before the sun is up every single day. They're that dedicated. They work extra hours now just to keep up. We need more drivers. We need more trucks. Of course, we do. We also need a very tiny rate increase of less than $10, less than $10 a month, so that they can continue their jobs to make children smile, and they do. If you guys saw these videos, oh my gosh, they're like the best thing to see. Their faces just glow, and you're like, "Oh, my God, they're so great." And I'm like, "I represent those people. It's fantastic. I love it. They're the best." And today, we're asking that after the 30,000 new accounts that they've had over a little more of a decade, that we also go to Option 1 and increase the fees. I meant negative zero. I have 72 minutes later, maybe? Okay.
We'll look forward to hearing it at happy hour. Dolores will be our final speaker of the day.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, I am the Vice President of Ask Me Local 2384. I am also a City of Phoenix resident. I have been a resident for 40 years. I'm here to speak in favor of the rate increase. Everything around us has increased for the last 10 years. I recently attended a town hall meeting where I was informed that a garbage truck could be purchased for under $200,000 10 years ago, and it is closer to $400 now. I'm dependent on my garbage being collected. I know there's more involved than just picking up my can. First, I need a garbage can. Then, I need a truck to pick it up. Then, I need a driver to drive the truck, and then there needs to be a place to dump my garbage. I need to have that truck being driven, maintained by mechanics, so it can be used for years. Another thing I need and receive is getting my debris that is too big to put in my trash to be picked up four times a year. That is a big plus for me. I consider all of this a big plus for me, and it saves me money. The money I save for these services is way more than the increase that is being requested. The service I receive is done so timely that I can set my clock with the time my can is being picked up, 6:20 a.m. All I have to do is fill my can and take it to the curb. I just want to say thank you, Public Works, for a job well done.
Thank you. We also have several individuals who filled out cards in support of Option 1 but not wishing to speak. Additionally, we received letters from the Mayo Clinic, from Keep America Beautiful, and from AmeriPen in support of Option 1. Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. I do support Option 1. I had the opportunity to go to three public meetings, and I will tell you, first and foremost, everyone complimented our Public Works Department, our drivers, staff, bar none. I was so proud to be at those meetings. So, thank you to Public Works and all the staff in Public Works. One thing that I did hear, and maybe we just don't do a good job of advertising, at one of the meetings, and I left a little early because I was feeling under the weather, but some of the comments dealt with, "Well, you know, I don't fill up my trash barrel." And so, I think, you know, we've actually talked to some of the residents in our district and told them that we have options and sizes of the barrel, and so hopefully, we'll do a better job of promoting that. I know, as an empty nester, years ago, we filled the barrels to the top, and now my husband and I just don't fill the barrels anymore because there's only two of us now. So, hopefully, we can get that word out. Are we going to do any additional research on the smaller barrels? Because I think that was probably the number-one complaint I heard was, "We just don't fill up our barrels, and we don't think it's fair." So, are we doing anything on that?
So, Mayor and Councilwoman Stark, thank you for your presence at the meetings, and thank you for that question. And yes, we are going to look at, right now, we do offer a smaller container, a medium-sized, a 60-gallon, for $3 less a month, and so that is something that we want to continue to explore. Joe and I were actually on the phone earlier this morning with a consultant, talking with them to hear the different services that they provide and the analysis that they've done in other cities. So, that is something else that we would like to explore over the next year as well and bring that back to Council.
Okay, that'd be great, because I think that was the number-one concern I heard. And it does affect people, especially on fixed incomes, so I think we need to broadcast that a little bit better and promote that. But thank you for everything you've done. You did a lot of work. I got a lot of surveys in my district as well, and most of them were supportive. And when you add the option of recycling every other week and Option 1, I think we have 80% people in support of recycling. That really says something very dramatic to me, that this city cares about recycling. So, thank you, and thank you for everything you guys have done.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership on several ideas, including the Faison, which seemed to be very popular as well. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Increasing the fees is not something that we take lightly, but I think my support for Option 1 comes with the support of the workers from our Public Works Department, who've been working hard through these last 10 years that we haven't had an increase. I also represent the district with the highest rate of pollution, and then just last year, Phoenix was rated the seventh-most polluted city. That means District 8 residents take the brunt of a lot of what's happening. I also want to remind residents who may need assistance that we have assistance programs, that there's ways that we can support people that are going to get hit by this increase. I want to thank the staff for the outreach. I got to sit in a couple of the meetings as well. It was fun. Got to thank the staff that gave out some compost to people in little jars. It was cool to watch people take some of that home. We had 1,733 respondents in District 8. Really proud of that and how people were engaged. So, yeah, 90% of our residents are satisfied with the service, and 90% believe that recycling is important. I think I read one of the quotes from one of the surveys, and it said, "It's a small price to pay as an investment for our future. We're doing this for our children and our children's children." So, I hope we can all come together as a city and make sure that we can hit the zero by 2050 and make sure we support our workers. So, I'd be supporting Option 1.
Thank you. I will also be supporting Option 1. I want to thank everyone who's been involved in this very impressive process. We had not updated our rates in about a decade, and we really needed to take the temperature of where our community was. Thank you for going out and talking to residents, really going wherever you were invited. Nine out of 10 residents support our trash collection. Nine out of 10 residents believe composting and recycling is important. That is an impressive amount of consensus in today's divided political climate. Phoenix has been a leader in waste management, and we will continue to be if we support today's motion. It was a great opportunity for me to hear how much nationally people think we are leaders, and also to hear how much people love our employees. As the mother of a young Phoenician, we certainly look forward to our Garbage and Recycling Day and waving to the trucks, and I would join the other parents out here who appreciate the drivers who take that time to smile or to know. It's a big deal for a young person. It's a great, you are a great face for our city, so thank you for taking care and really treating all of our young people who are so, so impressed with the trucks coming through the neighborhoods with care and concern. Really appreciate the process. We know that people are struggling, and we have to take this very seriously, and my colleagues have worked very hard to minimize the impact. Councilwoman Pastor is joining us by telephone. Councilwoman, are you ready?
Yes, Mayor. What I would like to say is that, if you indulge me in the story, I was brought up by working grandparents, and both my grandfathers were minors, but they were also both appreciate sustainability. My grandmother was a housekeeper. She cleaned houses. And my other grandma was an accountant for the trailer park that my grandparents owned. And they were part of the recession or the downfall of the Depression. And what they taught me was to give back to our Mother Earth and to sustain the items that we could keep and reuse and recycle. So, I have a great appreciation for that generation and the generations behind me, and it's my responsibility and our responsibility that we continue, for the future generations, to continue the recycling and teaching what it is to sustain sustainability. I am out of town. I am, right now, going to be honoring my dad and his legacy, and so what I have to say to those generations behind me and before me in the current, I will say I am supportive. And the most importantly, I am supportive of our city workers who do the work day in and day out. I bravo the staff that did the outreach, because they were with me at every meeting. And most importantly, our city workers are keeping our city awesome. So, thank you. I'm voting yes.
Well said.
Mayor?
Councilman DeCicio.
Mayor? Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to be opposing this measure. I don't think it's any surprise to anyone. But by raising these fees, everyone thinks it's only $6. But we saw a rate increase last year of 12% for water, another $6 here. We saw Uber and Lyft threaten to leave the City of Phoenix Airport because of fee increases and tax increases. Sooner or later, it's too much for them to bear. We have the working class and seniors who are going to be basically paying their disproportionate share of this. They're on fixed incomes. They cannot afford it any longer. So, if the City of Phoenix continues on this path of raising fees, raising taxes on a continual basis, we're not going to have that many citizens left. We're seeing what's happening in places like New York and other places where the taxes are so high that they are just walking away and they go to other states. People will do the same here in Phoenix. So, I'm going to be opposing this, Mayor, and I just hope that we don't see any more tax increases or fee increases for some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, and then Councilwoman Noakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm pretty conscious. I'm a senior. I live on pretty fixed income, and I am very careful on my household expenses. But you know what? I got a huge increase on my cable and my internet. Didn't think twice, didn't blink, just paid it. What's more essential, cable and internet or water and garbage? So, I want to make sure I keep my priorities in the right place. And I will tell you, I think your department is very conscious of how you spend your money. I love your apprenticeship program. I think it is outstanding. And you are very cognizant of the needs of the environment, and I appreciate what you do, so I am very supportive of the first option.
Councilman Noakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. So, a couple of questions on the recycling revenue. So, where does the, since China is not accepting our recycle anymore, reduced it, what do we do with our recycling material, from the plastic to the cardboard to the cans and all that, aluminum cans?
So, Mayor and Councilman Noakowski, in regards to our recyclables and selling them on the market, right now, we have a contract. We own our Murfs, but we have a contract with Republic Services to basically process our recyclables and to sell it on the market. So, with the China swar taking effect, a lot of the materials is now going to Indonesia. And so, it is up to, again, Republic, to find new homes for that material. I will say that all of our recyclables currently, we do have a market for, with the exception of our mixed plastics, and you've heard some of the individuals speak about that today. And that's where we're working with Renewology to basically take the mixed plastics, that's just your 3 through 7, it's not the number 1 or number 2, it's like your water bottles, and to turn those plastics into fuel. And that is a minimal amount of the total of recyclables that we process.
You know, one of the things I heard over and over and over again is how our employees are out there in their customer service, and that's what it's really about, is that our employees are out there, they give the best service, it makes us all look good. But at the same time, when was the last time that we actually looked at a study on the salaries of our employees? Are they at range? You know, we haven't done a compensation study of their salaries. I know we talked about it, and basically, I know when we were negotiating with the unions there, we heard that they wanted to make sure that this study was in place. So, with this increase, I want to make sure that if we're bragging, and the reason that most of us are up here saying such great service, are we going to be taking care of those individuals that are providing that great service out there in the community?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, thank you, and I appreciate the words that everyone is saying about our employees, because I will say, as a city manager, the number-one compliment I get from the public, as you all have reflected, is about our solid waste truck drivers, our sanitation truck drivers. They by far get the most compliments of any city employee that I hear about, and I think it's well-deserved, and thank you for complimenting that. We are in a, as we are coming out of the recession from 2009 and the last decade, we have not done a lot of class and comp studies. We have started this year an overall study by our Human Resources Department, and from there, we will go into specific classifications. The unions have negotiated varying numbers of studies that they have made a priority, and so we'll continue to work with our labor groups and also talk with you about the classifications that need to be restudied in the coming years.
Well, my question is, this increase, would that help with some of our employees that have, over the last 10 years, have given up some of their salaries to the City of Phoenix to actually help us balance our budget, right?
Yes, Councilman Noakowski, thank you. In this current contract, we negotiated a 3-plus percent year-one increase with the labor groups and a, I think it's a 2.5 increase in year-two that's split between one time and on increase and our other tax revenue growth from the economy allowed the council to authorize the first pay increases for our employees in 10 years after the concessions of the last decade. So, that is all built into being able to get back to a place where we are able to give our employees their well-deserved pay increases.
And then the other thing is, this was back in 2011 was last increase. My thing is, once again, Ginger, it's not a reflection on you, because you do what you're being told to do, but for 11 years, we knew there was a situation coming up with trucks and expansion and all that. We should have acted sooner on this. I mean, the cost of living of 2% each year, that would have been something that people can understand, because they get a cost of living in their salaries every year, too. But to hit people up all at one time, so my district has mixed feelings. You have seniors and big families are saying, you know, "This is another cost for our families, blah, blah, blah." Senior saying, "We're on a fixed income. We're talking about $800 a year, $840 a year." You know, "Councilman, how can you assist us anyway?" I go, "Yeah, there's programs for assistance and all that." But I think what's really important is that we need to figure things out. We need to look into the future, and I think people are all right, just like Councilmember Delde said, Williams, is people are used to having increases but not throwing 26% at one time. You know, we did that with our water. We did that now with our solid waste, and then basically, what's going to happen with our wastewater? Is that, is that next in the pipeline? So, I think we need to be upfront with people and just, let's increase it little by little, not just at one big chunk. But besides that, I think we look, we need to look outside the box. I think we can look at overtime costs, how we can basically use that. Is it more effective to have overtime for individuals than to actually turn around and hire more people? Are we using the trucks to its maximum capacity? Does that, is there a cost savings there if we actually go seven, six days instead of five days? Just looking outside the box, and I think there's other cities that do like an opt, option, you can opt out if you don't want to actually pay a certain amount, or we have that reduce of our waste cans, that you can have a smaller one. So, I think that we really need to educate our individuals that are out there, our residents, that there are programs out there, that it's not just a set rate, there's ways of saving over the year, I mean, within that annual cost. But most of all, I'm just really upset because it was just thrown at us, and then basically, just need to go out to the community. So, I brought it up to you all and saying, "Hey, we need to take this out to the community, and we need to have input from the community." So, once again, I've been serving on this council for 12 years, and when something is rushed like this, all kinds of red flags raised, right? So, I think that we need to look at future big projects when it comes to public safety, when it comes to wastewater, and we need to start talking about that in the future, too. So, with that, I just wanted to voice those concerns, and once again, thanks to our employees for always making us look good, and hopefully, we can turn around and make sure you guys get that just wage that we promised you all.
Thank you. Are we ready for roll call? Roll call.
Mayor, if I may, I will briefly read the title of the ordinance prior to roll call. Item number one, ordinance number G6673, an ordinance amending Chapter 27 of the Phoenix City Code by amending Sections 27-48(c) and 27-53(e)(2 pertaining to solid waste fees and providing for an effective date of the first bill day of April 2020. And for the roll call. DeCecio?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Mayor, I'm going to explain my vote. I'm going to be supporting this, but at the same time, I mean, we need more time. We need to really think in the future, next time, and not just throw a 20, what is it, 23% increase on our residents. That's just too much money. Even our city employees that are residents, that's a lot of money. So, in the future, I think everybody wants to keep our recycling, everybody wants to keep our trash pickup and all that, but we just need to be, we need to think ahead of time, so yes.
Pastore?
Really appreciate our constituents and definitely support our workers. It's a yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
7-2.
Passes 7 to 2. Thank you. Congratulations to our employees. We are going to take councilmember comments, but we'll wait one minute in case anyone would like to leave. Although, we're going to have fascinating comments, and you should all stay. After conferring with the council, we think we're going to end on a high note. We are adjourned.